Well, thank everybody for coming out to this meeting, this town hall meeting. I think all the supervisors will agree that some of the most consistent complaints we get, some of those constant complaints we get, deal with people's speeding, going through stop signs, and those kinds of issues. It's really an issue that affects every part of the township, and it's something that we felt that we wanted to devote a little bit of time to, to allow you to have some input, and also to have you hear from the people that deal with these issues on a daily basis from our end. This is not a board of supervisors' meeting, it's just a chance for us to hear from you and you to hear a little bit from us. And so, we're gonna begin first with the police department, they're gonna go through some of their procedures, how they deal with issues regarding, you know, traffic safety, speeding, and those kinds of things. And then, we're gonna ask our traffic engineers, traffic planning and design, to talk about some of the solutions that they have seen work in other municipalities, more sort of long-term fixes, long-term, more permanent solutions, you know, speed humps and narrowing of roadways, that kind of thing. And then, we'll open it up for public comments and questions and concerns. We wanna hear from as many people as we can, there's no sort of time limit on the meeting, we just wanna hear if there's a specific road that you see a problem on, an intersection that you see a problem on, we wanna hear that. And it's gonna help us, the police and the traffic engineers and the board, deal with these problems effectively, that's what we wanna do tonight, okay?
Mr. Harvey, when did we decide to have this meeting?
This was a meeting that I decided to sponsor, having these people here this evening, so that we could hear from the public. There was a notice that you got a week ago.
In my packet on Friday.
And you also got an email before that.
I don't read the emails, if you sent me one, don't bother.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Now, here, I've talked to more people than we have present who are worried and concerned, and the reason I asked the question is, I believe had we given the public ample notice, we would have this room overflowing, because I've talked to more people than we have chairs in this room. So, I apologize for such a small crowd, 'cause I do believe we would've packed the house had they known. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad that we have the people here this evening that we do have. And I think we had, we had mentioned of this at the last meeting, that we're gonna have a meeting like this, it was also on the cable channel, it was on the website, it was in the newspaper, it was an article written by Mr. Menno in the Sunday newspaper.
I don't buy the paper, and I don't watch television.
We're here to hear.
I'm putting my two cents in.
It's fine, but I'm here to hear their two cents, okay? Alright, so, we have to our police department to give us a presentation just on some of the things they do, their operating procedures, and also talk about some of the equipment we've bought recently to deal with these issues. Chief?
Mr. Chairman, members of board, thank you for having us here, Mr. Gregg, Mr. Baker, Mr. Dougherty, and most of all, to everybody in the community that took your time out tonight, I know it's very hot, and what we're gonna try to do tonight is try to give you a snapshot of what we do as a police department when it comes to enforcement. First of all, the biggest issue that faces any police department in most municipalities and boroughs is traffic enforcement. Without a doubt, that's the biggest issue that we deal with day in and day out. What we're gonna attempt to do tonight is give you a snapshot, well, since the beginning of the year, we just did a, we went back and we looked over our traffic enforcement, what we've done, what we've documented. We have 109 incidents that we documented since the beginning of the year. That doesn't count the officers that are on patrol, that do their normal enforcement, that in between their patrol time that they'll do. And a lot of those things that are documented, that will incur the complaints that we receive on a lot of the streets throughout the municipality. A lot of the complaints that we receive mostly are on through streets, Winding Way, Southalls, Northalls, Austin Drive is a big one, Hanford Road, major, major complaints. Terry and I have talked numerous times about the problems that they've had up on Winding Way, and we were fortunate enough that the supervisors approved this year, they gave us some tools to work with besides enforcement. One of them is called a Speed Spy. We don't have a picture of it here tonight, because the Speed Spy in itself, that would negate what it does. But what a Speed Spy does, for instance, Ms. Sterling will say they're having a problem, and Terry, I don't mean a single U.S., but on Winding Way, she'll say there's a problem on Winding Way, so I'll say to the lieutenant, "Take the Speed Spy and," I'm sorry, oh, I'm not talking into the mic.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. "Take the Speed Spy and we'll have it set up on your street." We'll just take a minute, and I'll have Lieutenant Arie, nobody knows a Speed Spy better than Lieutenant Arie, and he'll give you a breakdown exactly what it does, and the information that we received from it. Don?
Speed Spy is a traffic data gathering device, it's approximately, it's small, it's 16 by 14 inches, I'm not gonna tell you exactly what it looks like, but it's nondescript, we'll believe it that way. It's a K-band radar device, and it's able to gather traffic data. And we attach it temporarily out on the road where we have a problem, and it's capable of giving you a vehicle count, the average speed of the vehicles that go down the road, it'll give you the 85th percentile, which is the average speed that a normal driver will drive on that given road. It gives you the time of the violations, it gives you the heavy use of the roadway, and it'll give you the highest speed and the lowest speed. And that information is brought back, and then we look at it, and then we try to target our enforcement based upon the information we gather from this device. At that point, if we think we have a problem, we'll send out a trailer, a speed trailer, which we have, it's a traffic calming device, it gives the per, the vehicles driving down the road, it gives the drivers the exact speed, hopefully that'll calm them down, it tends to work to some degree, and then we follow up with officers, patrol, with more police cars out in the area. It's a three-pronged approach to deal with traffic calming.
What we'll also do now is, we'll give you a snapshot on the, on a particular day when we did on Winding Way, what the information that came back from the Speed Spy.
Okay, wine?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Winding Way, we had the device out on 624, it was out there for 22 hours, so almost an entire day. The posted speed limit on Winding Way is 25 miles per hour, the average speed on Winding Way was 25 miles per hour. The 85th percentile was 31 miles per hour. There was a total of 270 vehicles that went down the road, your highest use times were 1800, which is 6:00 PM, to 2100, which is 9:00 PM. The highest speed we recorded on the roadway was 40 miles an hour, and that was one vehicle. That's pretty much the information we gathered from Winding Way.
That's just a snapshot of one day. We're not saying that that thing encompasses all the problems or so and so forth, but we just wanted to give you a glimpse into what this tool does. One of the complaints that we had on Winding Way during the year were school buses. And from Valley Day School, the Pennsbury School Buses, because it's a cut-through, we were working with Mr. Taylor about the complaints with the school bus drivers. That seemed to be one of the high priorities in that area on Winding Way. Where Mr. Zupka lives, on Austin Drive, we've, it's, there's, that's another cut-through there. That is another place where we try to give it high priority because of the speeding that occurs, there are people cutting through. We had an officer, we did a snapshot, we'll give you a snapshot now of an officer sitting out in his, in his particular patrol car, and to show you how close the comparison is, Lieutenant Arie has a copy of his report. It's never there when you want it.
While Lieutenant Arie's looking for that, I wanna apologize first, I should've done introductions, so while he's looking for that, I'm just, I, my fault, I should've introduced who we have here, obviously the board of supervisors, but Chief Wilcox, obviously is here, Lieutenant Don Arie, and Lieutenant Todd Plutnik, Officer John Trindell, who handles, specifically handles traffic issues, and is also pretty state-certified in terms of accident investigation, and also Brian McShane, one of our officers, who does also handle some traffic issues here in the township, with traffic planning and design, we have Tony Dougherty and Jerry Baker, who'll be talking a little bit later on. So, I apologize for missing that.
Unfortunately, this one report that we have, if we could show you the comparison between that and the Speed Spy, it was remarkable, what they come up with. The speeds were like, the count on the cars were like between the times that we stated on the Speed Spy.
There it goes.
Do you have it? There we go.
Okay, on the June 23rd, at approximately 8:10 PM, we had a unmarked police vehicle out on Winding Way. Officer was observing traffic, he was out there for approximately one hour. He observed 25 vehicles go through the designated area, top speed was 33 miles an hour, it's a 25 mile an hour zone, and there was one vehicle at 31 miles per hour, and the vast majority of vehicles, all the other vehicles, were between 25 and 30 miles per hour.
If you use that comparison with the one hour with the Speed Spy, they really are very, very similar. I don't want anybody to think that we're, when we have the Speed Spy out there, that when we receive a complaint from anybody, that we're trying to, that we're trying to negate your complaint, that's not what we're there for. Without everybody here giving us information, we don't know where, where traffic problems occur, so it's very important that we hear from everybody in the room to call us. As a result of our new traffic plan, we're gonna have Officer Trindell, Officer Trindell is gonna be the new liaison for traffic enforcement in our township. If anybody doesn't know, Officer Trindell is a state-renowned accident investigator. There's not much that he hasn't done in the course of his career when it comes to accidents, he teaches all over the state, the Commonwealth, in Florida, all over the place. So, it's, it's a good maturation using Officer Trindell for traffic enforcement. With our new website, you'll be able to get on the police website, go into the police section of it, and hit the bar.
It should say traffic.
It should say traffic on there, and you'll go in, you'll hit traffic, and you'll be able to put your complaints right on the website there. If you feel uncomfortable doing that, or you're not comfortable using that, just feel free calling us, calling us on the telephone, call my office, call my secretary, call any one of the lieutenants, I want to hear from everybody here. We continue to do traffic enforcement, and it's a grassroots thing, it originates in roll call, with the sergeant and the corporal, the old grassroots that he designates officers to go out there, and he takes certain areas, there may be an accident, we've had several accidents in that area, he wants to, he or she wants to slow traffic down, we'll do that. We have new device coming in, we have another traffic trailer coming in, which will be a combination of our traffic trailer that we presently have, and the Speed Spy. So, we'll have the information, and we'll be able to show people the speeds that they're traveling. Unfortunately, in my career, and I'm just starting my 38th year here, that a lot of the times, when we get to the grassroots of traffic enforcement, it's a lot of people in our own neighborhoods. I live in the general area where a lot of the complaints are made, so we're not looking to cite everybody, we're looking to educate people, we're looking to help people, slow people down if they are traveling too fast. We're not looking to cite everybody, we're looking to educate people and prevent people from getting hurt, that's what it's about here. It's about the police department working together with the community, with the board of supervisors, and getting the message out between the website, emails, so on and so forth. We have the traffic engineers here, who are gonna put on a presentation tonight, they're gonna show us other options that normally we don't have. It's a real work in progress, and it's something that you work at every day. If anybody doesn't know, our ACO, Brian McShane, Brian McShane, you'll see him on any given day, taking the traffic trailers out, and putting them where the lieutenant suggests, or the sergeant suggests, or the corporal suggests, to hit certain areas. Brian would tell you that on, I think Brian was out on Hanford Road today, he's been out on Winding Way, he's been out at Austin Drive, on all the drives, Thorn Ridge, you name it, Brian's been there. John, in a minute, will tell you about a program that he just attended a meeting in Ben Salem about where PennDOT is gonna, wants to make it from Ben Salem right on through Marsville on Route 1, there's gonna be a commonality there, where they're gonna make things signage and everything all universal, so the step-up enforcement and to make it safer, especially down where the split occurs, down on Route 1. John, would you like to speak to that a second?
Just, you're most, sorry, most of you, most of you know me or have seen me sitting around in that big white van that says "traffic enforcement" on it, the guy you love to hate. I just spoke with PennDOT's traffic safety engineer, and they have some plans in the works, I don't know if anybody regularly travels up around Route 32 where we have, it's a very high accident area for us, it's probably four times the norm. So, we're working on getting that straightened out for you. A couple of years ago, we had some problems down at Penn Valley Road and Route 13, Old Bristol Pike, where the Wawa is, we were able to get that intersection straightened out by doing some just simple things, repainting that intersection, moving a stop sign, and just making it more visible, so that people understood what was going on when they got to that intersection. It may not be that easy with our local streets, 'cause we don't have PennDOT input on those, but we have our traffic engineers, and the same standard applies, that we can't just go out and, it's not gonna be a quick fix. If we have a problem, we'll go out and we'll try to solve that problem by just, our presence there and educating people, if that doesn't work, you know, we'll get together with our traffic engineers and try to maybe change some things around, you know, move some stop signs, or, I'm not necessarily a big proponent of putting stop signs in, 'cause that really doesn't solve the problem, that just makes people ignore more stop, you know, ignore more stop signs. But we'll work with you, if you guys, like, we have the new website, if you don't feel comfortable using that, if you go to the township website, you can find my phone number and my email address there, feel free to call me or email me, and I will get back to you, you know, as soon as I can, within a couple of days, and we'll try to help you out.
Once again, I can't emphasize enough, the purpose of this meeting here is not to tell you what we're doing, but to get the input from everybody here. We wanna make you feel that you're gonna be part of the solution, and you're gonna help us, and you're our eyes and our ears, and without you, we lose, we lose on this thing. So, we want you to know that we're out there, and we're giving it due diligence, day in and day out. But the purpose of this is to make our roadways and our communities safer, and to keep everybody safe here, especially when the, when the schools are starting in September again, and if there are problems with school buses, we will deal with that. Each time there's a problem, I want you to know, it may not get solved right away, but we're gonna keep at it until we get it right. Todd, do you have anything you wanna offer? Other than that, I think.
Chief, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I'd like to ask, first of all, how many people in the audience are from Vermillion Hill and who are bothered by the traffic on New Falls Road? May I see a show of hands, Vermillion Hill, and concern about that problem? When I said I received more complaints than there are seats in this room, I want to know if the people called you, because I commend you, Officer Trindell, for making your number available, and, you know, the people can, when I hear the complaints, I can say, "Call John Trindell," and I'll have your number and be able to give it to them. But this is a wonderful meeting, my contention is that if the people knew, I think we would have had overflowing. There's not one person here from New Falls Road that, that's where I heard the most complaints, so I'll be quiet and listen, I wanna learn too.
Chief, thank you very much. We'll have, we're gonna go to our traffic engineers now for a presentation, and then after they're done, we'll have, we'll open up the microphone here, so if you have questions for the police, or for the traffic engineers, or just comments, or just wanna, you know, voice your concerns about particular roads, intersections, you'll be able to do that, okay? So, Tony Dougherty from Traffic Planning and Design.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Like Mr. Harvey said, I'm Tony Dougherty with Traffic Planning and Design. As most of you know, we are the Township's traffic engineering consultant, and, you know, we were asked to come here tonight to give a little presentation about some options that are available to the community with regards to addressing traffic issues that arise within the local community. I have with me tonight Jerry Baker, who's also a professional engineer with Traffic Planning and Design. In addition to being one of our municipal engineers, he is also our traffic calming expert, which is why I brought him here, to give you a little presentation on the different techniques that are available. This presentation is one that we've done in the past at various technical societies or technical presentations, so we won't cover everything in extreme detail, but we will give you an idea of the different techniques that are out there, once community education does not do the trick, as the chief alluded to. You know, we always wanna try to do that first, and provide some of the techniques that provide information to the travelers about how fast they're going, or about the issues that are, that they have. And this is more of the next step of what we would do after that, when those methods don't work, some options that are available to, to the community, and basically certain characteristics of those, and what they mean. So, with that, let us get the projector going here, and Jerry will give you a presentation about some of these ideas.
The presentation's gonna be up here on this screen, so I don't know if anybody on this side of the room maybe wants to move over, or to get a better look, feel free to go ahead and do that.
We'll try to relocate, so we're not in anybody's way. Yeah.
I guess I'll hide back here in the corner, just wanna block anyone's view. Good evening, my name's Jerry Baker, I'm with Traffic Planning and Design, and again, we just wanna go through a brief presentation on traffic calming, to help everyone understand exactly what we are talking about. And I wanted to start off with a definition of traffic calming from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and they basically say that it's a combination of mainly physical measures that reduce the negative effects of motor vehicle use after altered driving behavior and improve conditions for non-motorized street users. And I wanna point out that it is mainly physical features, so we're basically looking at a horizontal or a vertical deflection of some sort of a vehicle. You know, signing and striping are somewhat considered traffic calming measures, but you're relying on the driver to obey those signs and those pavement markings, and, you know, you're not always gonna get compliance, otherwise you wouldn't even be considering the traffic calming, because they would've been obeying the speed limit signs to begin with, so, I just wanted to point that out. Some of the reasons you would wanna consider traffic calming, or some of the objectives you would hope to achieve, would be to reduce speeds or cut through traffic on certain roads, reduce accident and injury rates, encourage pedestrian and bicycle mobility, and improve community aesthetics. And the aesthetics thing is more subjective, some people, depending on the device or the measure that's used, how it's implemented, and the location, et cetera, it can be very nice-looking, or some people would say it's not, you know, if it's in their front yard, they may not like it so much. Traffic calming is really nothing new, but it is, I would say it is fairly new to Pennsylvania. Up until 2001, PennDOT didn't have any handbooks, any information, and really did not recognize traffic calming on state roads. So, although municipalities have had, had these issues for years, municipalities in Pennsylvania were a little reluctant to implement these devices, because there was a liability potential there, since PennDOT didn't really support them. So, in 2001, PennDOT prepared this Pennsylvania Traffic Calming Handbook, which is basically what this presentation is based on tonight, and it outlines the approval process, which really starts with what we're doing tonight with education, public involvement, again, what we're doing tonight, design guidelines, and I'll go through some of those later on in the presentation. And again, it sort of limits the township's liability, if we follow this handbook, the township would be in a much better position if there were an accident or something of that sort. So, when and where are traffic calming measures appropriate? Well, first, you'd wanna start off with education enforcement. If that doesn't work, then you need to go to the next step, which would be traffic calming measures, which are more of a physical feature that basically forces a driver to slow down. You know, generally, we wouldn't even consider it unless the speeds, the 85th percentile speed exceeds 10 miles per hour over the posted speed limit. And the 85th percentile speed is basically the speed that 85% of drivers travel at or below, and that's generally what we use in engineering for all of our designs. We never designed for the 100th percentile. And then, if you have, if you're doing it for cut-through traffic, you might wanna see something on the order of 40%. And these, these numbers can be changed, but this is typically like a rule of thumb, and if the township decides to move forward with this, we would probably formalize some of these, these numbers, to help focus on where the real problems are, and where we should focus our efforts. We'd also wanna implement these on local residential streets, we're not gonna put it on a major highway. You wanna make sure you don't have too much truck traffic, emergency response routes, things like that, because it can, it can slow emergency response. Other places that would be, a good place for it would be maybe in a downtown district, even though the volumes might be a little heavier, the speeds are usually a little lighter, you have more pedestrian traffic and things of that nature, so that would be a good, good candidate for traffic calming measures. Now, I just wanna briefly go through some of the different traffic calming measures that could be implemented, and I sort of arranged this in the least expensive and the easiest to implement options, all the way up through, they get more expensive, more difficult to implement, and, so I'll start with pavement markings. As I mentioned earlier, they're not really a physical feature, so you're kind of relying on, on the driver to obey them, but they can, they can have some benefit, though. The first one we have there, the picture on the left, is transverse pavement markings. You've probably seen these on the approach to a toll booth, the lines get consecutively closer as you approach a curve, or the toll booth, or some other feature that they're trying to warn you of. And by getting closer together, it makes the driver feel as if they're traveling faster than they really are, so it slows them down. Didn't mention it here, but you could also double or triple those pavement markings, if we use like a hot thermoplastic material, and it would end up raising those markings by probably a quarter to a half an inch, and it sort of turns into a rumble strip at that point, again, giving you, giving the driver more, more response and feedback to help them realize they need to slow down. The other thing that can be useful, a lot of times we have very wide streets with no pavement markings, particularly in residential areas, and sometimes the pavement markings can be helpful, if we put a double yellow center line and a white edge line, it makes the lanes feel narrower, and drivers will tend to slow down a little bit if, if they feel constricted. One other thing I mentioned back on that slide was, you could also paint messages on the road, such as speed limits, stop ahead, slow curve ahead, things of that nature. Texture crosswalks can be used to help emphasize crosswalk locations, they could be concrete pavers, or in this case, this picture here is showing stamped asphalt with a colored pavement to mimic the look of concrete pavers or bricks. The texture is just another measure to help the driver identify that there's a feature there that they should slow down for, and again, the pavement's a different color to help notify the driver. And again, the pavement's a different color to help notify the driver that there is a crosswalk there. These are just advantages and disadvantages. I sort of went through that briefly. Radar speed signs. This is similar to what the police are implementing now, except this one actually has feedback for the driver to tell them what their speed is versus the posted speed. And these have been very effective. We represent at least one township I know that has done this, and they're very pleased with the results. I think it's only been in place there for about a year, so I'll be interested to see what happens in the long term, if people start to get used to it, or if they continue to be effective. But so far, the only indications are that they are. Rumble strips. They could come in at different varieties. One would be the pavement markings that I just mentioned previously. The picture that we show here in this slide are the centerline rumble strips, which you're seeing on more and more roads around here. They're useful on curves or narrow roads. They help keep the driver on their own side of the road. I've also recommended them recently in a township that we represent, where it's a very narrow road, but there's not much traffic on it, somewhere in the order of 200 or 300 vehicles per day. So, the driver knows that there's not going to be an oncoming, the chances are there's not going to be an oncoming vehicle, so they drive up the center of the road. We could just stripe it, but then you might have drivers crossing the lines. So you could go one step further and put the rumble strips in. It'll help confine the driver to their lane. Speed humps, I would say are probably one of the most effective tools that we have for traffic calming, and are becoming fairly common in residential areas. They should not be confused with a speed bump. The bumps are only about one or two feet wide. You may have seen them in shopping centers and parking lots. The humps generally measure about 12 feet wide. They're about three to four inches high. They have a parabolic shape. And you really, if you're traveling the speed limit, you really don't have to slow down when you go over them. They're designed for whatever the speed of the road is. If you go faster than what it's designed for, you'll feel uncomfortable. The vehicle will rock, but the driver won't lose control of the vehicle. You really don't have to worry about vehicle damage like you do with a speed bump.
Mr. Baker, just real briefly, anybody who's been in the Falls Township Park, coming in off of Mill Creek Road, there's a speed hump there. So that's actually something that was built a couple of years ago. We wanted to build that, just so we had an idea. We were considering putting those in certain areas of the township. We wanted to build one to see what it would look like and see how different types of vehicles would handle that kind of hump. So that's, just for clarification. Go ahead.
And, you know, again, I just mentioned a lot of the advantages. Some of the disadvantages would be the same really for any traffic calming measure. You have to consider emergency response times. They might have to alter the route or slow down going over these humps. Snow removal can be a problem. They do make these in temporary humps. They're some sort of a hard rubber that you can bolt to the road. But snow removal was a problem with them, because you have to remove them during the winter months. If the road's curbed, you have to consider drainage. And my experience has been, they did come back a little more expensive on at least one project than what we had thought. We're indicating, I think, about 1,500 to 3,500 per hump. I've seen bids as high as 6,000 to 7,000 for those. Raised crosswalks, it's really a combination of a couple of the things that I talked about previously. It's really nothing more than a speed hump or a speed table with a raised cross, a painted crosswalk on top. You could even texture it if you'd like. But they are very effective, because it draws attention to the crosswalk. And again, it forces the motorists to slow down. It improves visibility for the motorist seeing the pedestrian, and also for the pedestrian seeing the driver. On-street parking. Again, actually, this picture here is showing, I would say, a combination of measures. Besides the vehicles parking on the street, it's also showing curb extensions, which effectively narrow the road and cause friction or discomfort for the driver, tending to slow them down. On-street parking can be a useful tool, particularly in a residential district. You do have to be concerned, though, about, you know, if the speeds are relatively high on the road. You have to worry about car doors swinging out in the traffic. It can hide pedestrians, like small children running through the vehicles. But at the same time, it can also protect pedestrians who are walking on the sidewalk. So, a lot of things to consider there. Raised medians. Basically create a boulevard out of a road. Put a median up the center of the street. You could landscape it, make it look very attractive. By doing that, you can also reduce the lane widths on either side of the median, and that tends to slow traffic down. Now, the one, the raised medians shown in these pictures probably have a little wider roads than, in some cases, you might want to lower. If you reduce that width to 13 feet or so, I think that would be much better at traffic calming. It also gives a place for pedestrians, a safe place if they're trying to cross the road. We've had situations where we had a six-lane highway with turn lanes. Ended up being probably eight to nine lanes wide by the time you factor in the turn lanes. And it was, there was a trail crossing the road, so it's very difficult to get a pedestrian to cross that much, that width at one time. The signal timings really didn't allow that to happen. So, in that case, you could install the medians, and the pedestrian then could cross one half of the road at a time. So that's a useful tool for that situation. Chicanes, excuse me. Basically, what you're doing is creating like a serpentine or an S-curve in the road. And by doing so, it forces vehicles to slow down. This is one I took a picture of in Newcastle County, Delaware. It seems like it's a very effective one. I've seen others that weren't as effective, because they were actually designed in such a way that they really weren't effective at slowing you down. There wasn't much of a deflection. In this case, it's a pretty severe deflection in a short distance. And I think it's pretty attractive-looking as well. Seems like it works better when you have a wide road with wide shoulders. There wasn't much modification that needed to be done to the road. Bulbouts or curb extensions. This one is shown at an intersection. They can be useful. For one, it protects the parked vehicles on the road. The other thing it does is it chokes down the intersection so that vehicles travel slower through the intersection. It makes the crossing distance for the pedestrians shorter by bringing the handicap ramp or the edge of the curb closer to the street. Gateways. They're really not much different, I guess, than a raised median, but you could put it at the beginning of a residential neighborhood or some kind of a district that you're trying to make it known that there's something different here, and, you know, you should slow down going through this area. And again, it makes it very attractive. If you do it the right way, you can landscape it, put pavers in it, and all sorts of things. Raised intersections. Same idea as the hump or the table or the raised crosswalk, but in this case, what you're doing is raising the entire intersection. You know, that can be fairly useful for obvious reasons. It's going to slow traffic down through the intersection. Some things you would have to consider, though, would be drainage. In this particular picture, it looks like that wasn't a problem, because they put the, they put the raised section in the center of the intersection, and they didn't really affect the curbs or anything. But in other, you know, that would be something that would need to be considered, because it can affect drainage. Traffic circles. These would be used in the middle of an intersection. It's a small circle. Traffic circulates counterclockwise around this. So it's a one-way flow. And basically, everyone's making a right-term movement going in and exiting the circle. This would be sort of a retrofit, I think, for a small residential neighborhood. If it was more of a higher classification road, we'd probably be looking at a roundabout, which is a similar design, but there's a few differences. There would be medians entering the, on the approaches. It would probably be a little larger than this. Would accommodate trucks and things of that nature. Right-in, right-out islands. These are used throughout this township and all over the place, but they're useful for restricting certain traffic movements. I think they pretty much speak for themselves. Semi-diverters. You could put this on one approach or several approaches to restrict certain movements. In the schematic shown in the lower right there, they're restricting traffic from heading towards the right of the screen. Semi-diverters. Basically, what you're doing here is providing a median down the center of the road to prevent cross-traffic. The picture I took there on the left was in Newcastle County, Delaware. It's a major shopping center where the picture's taken from. And what they've done is they provided a median in the center of the intersection to prevent traffic from traveling straight through in a residential neighborhood. And that's very effective. There's really no way to enter that residential neighborhood unless you go completely out of your way around the block.
Yeah, one thing I just wanted to add, as you can tell, we've made a switch here in the presentation from more speed-control techniques. These are more applicable for cut-through-type reductions. So that's, you can notice the difference in what it's trying to accomplish.
Diagonal diverters along the same line, just a different way of constructing the obstruction. Street closures. You could completely close one leg of an intersection or provide a cul-de-sac somewhere along the length of the road. You know, you have to watch certain things, obviously, there with emergency response. You don't want to also overload the, like in this example here. If that was a very long stretch of road on the left side of the screen, you'd be sending a lot of traffic down to the left. So you don't want to create another problem by solving one problem. This is just a picture of a combination of measures. In this photo, there are the bulb extensions or the curb extensions, which constrict the road, make it feel narrower. The driver tends to slow down. It protects the parked vehicles on the road. And then you have a crosswalk, which is made shorter by having the curb extensions. And then you also have the crosswalk raised, which slows the vehicles down. I'm not really going to go through this in detail, but I think everyone has these handouts. It was just a table of the effectiveness of each of these measures that we went through. I wanted to point out some things that are not traffic calming, and this is a misconception, I think, that a lot of people have. If people were speeding, they generally would go to the police department and say, "Hey, why don't we lower the speed limit out here? People seem to be traveling too fast." And that's not effective. In fact, the way speed limits are developed or posted in Pennsylvania is that we look at the 85th percentile speed of the road, and the posted speed should be within 5 to 10 miles an hour of that 85th percentile speed. And the thinking there is that most drivers travel at a safe and prudent speed. I mean, if you talk to anyone, they're not going to tell you that they were intentionally driving fast or unsafe. I mean, everyone thinks they're a good driver, and they're handling their vehicle at a speed that they think is safe. So, by lowering the speed limit, they're going to continue to drive how they feel comfortable, and it's not going to be effective. The other thing is, it's not going to be enforceable, because if we were to just arbitrarily lower speed limits and we tried to enforce that, it wouldn't hold up in court. So, that's not effective. The other thing would be stop signs. People think, "Let's just put more stop signs up, and it'll slow people down." There's a couple of reasons why that doesn't work. For one, if it's not warranted, drivers probably will realize that, and they're not going to obey it. They're going to think, you know, "I've never seen a car coming in the other direction. I don't need to stop here." So it loses, it helps drivers lose respect for stop signs. And then it sort of turns into, you know, the boy that cried wolf. You know, it's like, "Oh, I didn't know I was supposed to stop at this stop sign, because I didn't have to stop at the last one." And so that's just something that, you know, we need to avoid as traffic engineers. We can't be putting stop signs where they're not warranted. The other thing is, drivers tend to feel that they've lost time if you put a series of stop signs in. Really, for any kind of traffic calming measure, too, that's something I didn't measure, or didn't indicate earlier, is that we have to watch the spacing of these measures. Because if we put them too far apart, drivers then tend to think that, "Okay, I lost time going over that one speed hump. Now I'm going to make up the time between the humps." And then the speed sometimes will increase between those measures. So we have to be careful when we implement them, that we put them at the proper spacing, so that they're effective throughout the whole length of road. And I think that would apply with stop signs as well.
You also want to mention, too, that, you know, there's warrants for putting in stop signs. And if you don't meet those warrants and you put them in, you could be opening up the township for liability if something were to happen at that unwarranted stop sign.
Right. Just to give you an indication of what those warrants consist of, some of them are based on traffic volume. You have to have a certain amount of volume on both legs of the intersection, both of the cross streets. That would be one warrant. Another one would be if there was a sight-distance problem. If you can't see when you're approaching an intersection, that would be an ideal situation or an acceptable situation where we could implement multiway stop. The other would be if a traffic signal is warranted, and we know that it's going to be some time until it's designed and constructed, a stop sign could be implemented there as a temporary measure. And, did I cover all of them?
You got sight distance?
Sight distance is the big one. That's generally when we would implement a multiway stop. This is just an example here of a flow chart. I'm not going to go through it in detail, but if the township does decide to go with implementing traffic calming into the township, the PennDOT manual suggests a process to go through so that it's done consistently for each neighborhood or each area of concern. And generally, the way it would work is the residents would bring the situation to the township's attention. And then the township, you know, they may ask the police department to go out and see if there really is a concern. Or if the, I shouldn't say if there's a concern. Obviously, it would be a concern if it was brought to their attention. But if vehicles are traveling at high speeds or running stop signs, or whatever the situation may be, does it warrant further study? And then if it does, then we would start the study process. We might take a survey of residents in the neighborhood to see if the residents would even consider traffic calming in their neighborhood. Obviously, the township doesn't want to pursue something that the residents don't want to see happen. So we want to make sure that everyone's on the same page. If everyone's in agreement that we should continue to study this further, then the next step would be for us to go ahead and do a study and determine what the problems are. And, you know, we would look in our toolbox of all the measures that I just went through, and see which ones would be appropriate for that particular location. And then, another thing that a lot of townships do, and I think it's a good idea, after we do that study and we come up with some recommendations, go back and survey the residents again. And make sure that they're all in agreement with what we're recommending. Because I've seen in a couple of cases, we did a study. We recommended speed humps, and everyone was in favor of it before we actually prepared the plan. Once the plan was completed, certain residents realized that the hump was going to be in front of their house. Now they didn't like it so much, because they're going to have the signs, they're going to have the vehicles squealing, and chains banging on trucks, and things of that sort. So, it's a good idea just to make sure that everyone's still on the same page before the township puts a lot of effort into this. Again, if everyone's on the same page, then you go to the next step, and you start implementing the measures. So, that, in a nutshell, that's what that flow chart was going through. Some of the things that we would consider going through it, through the study, would be if we implement traffic calming on a certain street, are we going to divert traffic to another street? Sometimes that might be our goal. If there's cut-through traffic, we may want to implement traffic calming to keep traffic off of that road and divert them somewhere else. Other times, that may not be our goal. We might just be trying to slow traffic down, and in doing so, we could create a problem somewhere else. Cost is obviously a major Cost is obviously a major issue. There's a certain cost to do the study, there's a certain cost to implement the improvements, and then there's also a certain cost associated with maintenance. Design feasibility, are we going to have issues with snow removal, emergency access, school bus routes? Sometimes you have to consider the trashmen riding on the back of the trucks, geometry of the intersections, or the, you know, another thing that we come across, you can't always implement these on steep grades, sharp curves. So there may not be anything we can do in that situation if those conditions exist. Property acquisition, do we need to acquire right-of-way to do whatever we're trying to do? We want to maximize access to residents. Again, some of those things that we talked about, such as restricting certain turning movements or closing a road, that could have a positive effect on certain residents, it could have a negative effect on others. Liquid fuels funding, really what that is, is that the township receives money each year from the state. It's revenue that the township, or that the state collects based on our fuel taxes, and that comes back to the municipality for them to maintain the roads. If we're going to spend that money on traffic calming, there are certain procedures we would have to follow. The other thing is, if we're going to restrict certain types of traffic on a road, that could affect the township's eligibility for receiving those funds in the future for that I think also temporary measures. I mentioned the rubber speed humps earlier. Some municipalities try that out first. We could put them down in the neighborhood, see if they're effective, try them out before we really commit to them, and it puts something permanent in, and then enforceability. I just wanted to point out, I didn't really get into it too much here, but at the bottom of all these sheets here, these slides, we put approximate costs. I just want to point out that those costs are obviously variable, and they're dependent on a lot of things. It depends on how many contractors are bidding on the job, who's doing the work, is it the municipality, is it going out to bid? Different materials that we could use. We could use concrete, we could use asphalt, we could use paver. Landscaping, you know, we could do something very basic to something very elaborate, so that would affect cost. And then we just have a slide here with all different websites that anyone can go to if you want to learn more about traffic calming.
Thanks, Jerry. I guess a couple more points I wanted to state before I throw it back to Mr. Harvey. Obviously, at this point, we haven't been tasked to look at any specific situation yet. I think that's why we're here tonight and why we discussed the website for putting these issues out there. But we wanted to provide you some general information, which I think we did tonight, of some of the techniques are out there. I know there was also concern that maybe not everybody that has an issue could make it tonight. And I think, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but I don't think this is being looked at as a one-time opportunity for the residents to raise their concerns with the website. And we provide some information to the township with regards to establishment of a traffic committee, or a traffic calming committee, and a process to formalize evaluating of these opportunities. And I think that's something that we would look to implement if this moves further. But this isn't a one-time shot. We definitely want to hear from the residents of where the concerns are, and I think that's why we're here, to get this started tonight and hear that now. So I think that's all that I had, that we had from traffic planning and design. And Mr. Harvey?
Okay.
Mr. Baker and Mr. Dougherty, I commend you for this. I don't know who put this together. It was probably a joint effort, or even your entire company was involved. But I want to tell you that I came here expecting to see a horse and pony show, and that's what I'm accustomed to for 46 years of attending meetings like this. This is one of the most comprehensive presentations I've ever seen, and I want to thank you for it. And I'd like to suggest you address one of the things that concerned me. I didn't want this to be a one-shot deal. And I think, Mr. Harvey, you will put it on our township website, and the people will be able to watch and study those alternatives that you've presented. I've made notes and, you know, for different problems that have been brought to my attention, and I've already picked out, you know, the, some of the solutions that could be considered that aren't too costly for us to do. So I am thrilled that I came here tonight to see this, and I'm going to hope that the residents will watch it and watch it and watch it until they can pick what would solve the problem on their street. So orchids to you tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you, Echomissive Vislowski's comments. Thank you for the complete look you gave us here. And I think you have arranged with Mr. Markey already that this PowerPoint, did you, I think you forwarded it to him?
I forwarded it earlier today.
All right, yes. We, I know that was something we talked about earlier, was having this information, this PowerPoint presentation that you just saw, given to Mr. Markey, who handles the website and the cable channel. And so this, obviously, this meeting will be broadcast on the cable channel. It'll probably show up, appear right after the normal meetings, you know, seven o'clock, the normal town, seven and 10, 10:00 in the morning, seven o'clock at night, the normal township meetings run, and this meeting will come right after that. But if you wanted to go on the website and take a look at this presentation, again, you'll be able to do that, you and everybody who's watching at home, so.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes, ma'am.
Could we ask for that flow chart? That's not in our packet of papers. I'd like to have one. And there were, the last two pages, I think, of Mr. Baker's.
It's very small.
Is it there?
It's very small.
It's there, but it's very small. We can provide a larger copy.
So I would appreciate having that.
Sure.
I can estimate what time it would take, you know, when someone talks to me about a problem. And, boy, I do want to thank our police department. You know, I think you're the best in Pennsylvania, and you guys are just great. John Trindell, you're in my book. That traffic thing that we did, that's one of the funniest stories. But, you know, all of you guys are just, you make us proud, and I thank you for being here tonight, too. What I thought would be a waste of time was a wonderful presentation.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes, sir.
Before we open it up to questions, I'd just like to take the opportunity, on behalf of the entire police department, to thank the entire board for every time we come to you. And I know it seems like we're always nagging you for equipment all the time, but you never turn us down, and you're always there for us, and you give us the best equipment and the best tools in order to facilitate the service to the community. I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you, Chief. I want to thank you, obviously, your staff as well, did an excellent job today, just giving us an idea. And if, one of the, one of the things we wanted to do tonight, again, is share this information with you, getting a chance to see more sort of the immediate, short-term reaction we can have, the police department can give us in terms of using the equipment we have and the personnel and the staff, and then also, obviously, the more long-term. And there is definitely a connection here, you know, as Lieutenant Ari mentioned, with the Speed Spy device, which we purchased one of, and I think the board's probably open to the idea of purchasing more, the Speed Trailer, which we have one of, but we're, we've purchased another one that'll be coming, increasing the police department's ability to answer some of your needs and requests. But the data that's gathered can be used, then, in conjunction with traffic planning and design, to really start looking at, is this a situation on this road where a long-term, more permanent solutions needed? Or is this more of a temporary issue, or is this more of an issue that doesn't really meet that? So there is definitely a connection between the two sides here. For those that are not accustomed to, you know, the township meetings, we always have a public comment, people sign in for public comment, and there was a sign-in sheet in the back that some people signed in on. That being said, I am going to start just with the sign-in sheet, with the people that signed in. I guess people that are used to it or just saw it and wanted to sign in. However, if you did not sign in, please, just, you know, I'll go through the six names that are here. Anybody that didn't sign in, if you want to speak, you know, we're here to listen to you. So, you know, well, just raise your hand and we'll call on you, and we want to hear what you have to say. Okay? So, and you can, if there's a specific question you have for anybody, that's fine. If you just want to voice your concerns about a specific intersection or a street, that's fine. You know, again, we're here to listen to you. So, and I'll do the best I can with pronouncing the names. Most of them look pretty simple. Terry Sterling?
Yes. Chief, I want to know how you're going to educate motorists? If you're not going to cite them, how are we going to educate them when they're on the BlackBerry, the Blue Bear itself, you know, all those other variables that go along with speeding and the traffic? All right. I'd rather be in a microphone.
Terry, to begin with, I think tonight is a good beginning.
Yes.
Yes. Tonight is a good beginning, and we-
I'd like to thank you, too, as Ms. Vislowski, she was not present at the last meeting, but it was with Chief and Mr. Harvey and some of us that have been complaining for three years that got this whole thing going.
I had no idea. And when I miss a meeting, I had a heart attack, and my doctor doesn't even want me to be here tonight.
I'm glad you're here.
I'm glad I'm here, too.
I want to thank him for your effort.
Thank you.
And Mr. Harvey, and the planning-
Terry, to answer your question, to begin with, there's the officer on the street. He has a lot of discretionary powers. And it begins and ends with him. He may think a citation is warranted right away, he may give a citation. He may think a warning is necessitated. I do not want to take those discretionary powers away from the officer and/or their supervisors. Their supervisor may have information that he may instruct his officers to issue citations. I don't want to take those powers away from the officers on the street. It's very discretionary. And depending on the situation, it'll dictate whether citations are issued or not issued.
I was curious. Thank you.
I like that answer.
The intersection that I would make note, besides the speeding on Winding and Alden that I brought my petition in the last meeting, I would like, falls tangent, to consider the sight distance at Makefield and Winding Way. People pulling out of the bagel store, you get clearance coming up Big Oak Road, and you have a bus that's flying with students on it, trying to get to his destination. Then you have someone pull out of the bagel store, and there's trees there, and that motorist comes out, there's very short distance. And I think you realize that John the Guard got hit there by a bus last year. So it's a very high-volume traffic and a lot of things going on there that I think that could be looked at if they would-
Terry, also, one of your concerns that you voiced to me on numerous occasions are the buses from Valley Day School.
Yes, and I think that's going to be discussed with the resident behind me, so I'll give up the floor.
Okay.
He'll enlighten you about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Please, Irene, I'm sorry, Mr. Harvey. Mr. Longcosky is taking Irene's place.
Oh, okay, all right.
I want to thank everybody, not just by names, all of you, but we have problems on Alden Avenue, which makes the problem go up to Winding Way. Alden Avenue is a snow removal, okay, emergency road. Okay? It's wide, very wide, okay? I'm going to talk about the speeders that end up being speeders up there through the stop signs. They start down at my section of the street. They do not stop at any stop signs. Your school buses pull out, does not stop at stop signs. Okay? And by the time they go in front of my house, which is only about three houses up from the corner, they're going 45 to 50 up there, and I'm not kidding you. And even Mr. Blue across the street will verify that. They do not stop at stop signs. They get their engines revved right at the stop sign, come up around the corner, and they're flying right by my house. I yell at them, you know what they tell me? Take it up with the school people. They're the drivers, not the school people.
Get the bus number and turn them in.
Okay, but another thing is, I went down to the school. I presented the problem with the stop signs and the speeding of the buses, coming down the hill, going up the hill. And I talked to Mr., I think his name's Axe, which is a superintendent, I think I'm right, Axe, it sounds like. I didn't write down his name.
Paul Long is the superintendent?
He was there this past season, because I was down there. I went down to him with complaints about the way the buses are parked on the side street there. When our children went to school, they had to park on the main street, which is Alden Avenue, because you can see around them. There's plenty of room for two cars to pass, or pass a bus picking up the children at the sidewalk on Alden Avenue. Why are they parking over where there's a curve? And I mean, you cannot see around them when you're coming in or going out of that side street where they pick up. And I almost had two head-on collisions myself in the wintertime. I've mentioned it to the school people. I've never been at any of your meetings, but I think it's getting a little too aggravating. I'm getting older, maybe I sound like a grump, I don't know. But anyway, I think safety-wise, those school buses should do the same as when my children went to school down the street. I've been there for 50-some years. My children had to be picked up, not my children, but the children from the Pensburger, we have out-of-state buses coming there, and you know, they're very ignorant. They even provoke the children to do stuff. I have evidence at home of one time that they, I know the bus driver knew that this went out. A pillow in a bag and some other junk in there, and the identification of the school bus was inside the bag that he threw out. And I went down there, and I told the superintendent. And he says, well, I'm going to put flyers out to all the bus drivers about the incidents. When the, when the school bus driver, when I approach them about their speeding, about their ignorance, they talk back to me like I'm an idiot. And that's when the children pick up to do what they do by throwing stuff out their windows. Okay?
Can I just ask a question? You're talking, the school you're referencing, is it Valley Day that you're-
Valley Day School.
Okay, all right. I just want to be clear.
And that's side with, and they have, and I think if your police officers can verify this, if they ever came around that corner when all the school buses was lined up, they cannot see around those school buses to come up that street. I don't know if any of the police officers here ever rode that street or not, but when school opens up again, I'd appreciate if they go down there and see what I'm talking about and do something about it, because I was lucky twice. There was snow on the ground, I was lucky, I could avoid an accident, head-on, because I didn't see this car coming, and he wasn't coming slow like I was. He was coming pretty fast. Had I not been able to stop, we would have had a head-on collision. And I don't want to be in the hospital, I want to live my life. That's one of the safety factors. And the stop signs are useless, like it says. They are very useless. I've seen police officers stop at a stop sign, and a car come down the side road by Valley Day, goes zooming down Alden Avenue, the cop was stopped here, that car never stopped, and he never even turned around and went after the guy. I've seen it happen. I'm not mentioning who it was, but it's been done. We need more policemen patrol in that street, if that's the only way, or put, I know you can use electronic systems. I don't care if you paint that electronic line in front of my house and sit in my driveway and time those cars going across that electronic line. I'll give you permission to sit up in my driveway.
Okay, all right, okay.
And I don't know, and most of the speeding time in this time of the year is between 4:00 and 6:30, and from 7:30 to 9:00 o'clock at night, when all the young kids go up the street to the park, which I know everybody knows what's going on at the park, but I think it's the shortcut for the park. And that's all I can say, but that's the only way you can stop the speeders, is put more police out there and stop them when they don't stop at the stop sign. Don't let them go by and say, oh, I didn't see you. I mean, how can you help but, see, you stopped, and he comes zooming this way? No, I don't believe that.
Okay.
We need a little better enforcement on that situation.
Okay.
I saw it with my own eye. I have another guy that saw it also at the same time I saw it.
All right, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Officer Trindell.
And one thing I didn't mention, I should have mentioned earlier, I know, Ms. Sterling, I know we have your address, but anybody who speaks, you know, if you feel comfortable giving your address to the police department or anybody, you know, just so they know, talking about a specific house, specific intersection, will be happy, or any contact information that you feel comfortable giving, you know, so we can get back to you, that's something. So.
This girl, just finish that. She also had issues with a bus almost hitting her for Valley Day, so I would like to mention her name, because I petitioned all these people.
Okay.
That comp, Cynthia. She has issues with Valley Day buses, just please finish that one line.
Here's one, another one. Cynthia Ananortia, she had an issue with a bus almost hitting her.
Okay.
From Valley Day School.
Officer Trindell just indicated that he's going to jump on this right away.
Yeah, well, right now, you're not going to do much, because Valley Day-
That's okay. But he will, he'll be due diligent. I know him, I've known him for years.
Thank you.
I appreciate that very much.
Okay, thank you. Just before we call the next name, it sounds like, I think that other microphone is giving us some feedback. Officer McShane, can you pull that other microphone off of that force, if you don't mind? Just make sure it's shut off. I think we're getting some feedback from it. I don't want to... You just want to roll it up and put it up here or something? Is it off? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next name on our list is Janice Harmon.
Hi. I live on South Queen Anne, between South Olds Boulevard and Trenton Road. And our biggest problem is school year. I mean, it's all year-round, but most of the time it's the school year. Between seven o'clock and seven-thirty, I live between three stop signs and I can't back out of my driveway in the morning. I have a new neighbor. He's a state, he's a deputy sheriff up in Doylestown and he was shocked by the traffic and the absolute disregard for the stop sign and the speeds. They tend to stop, hit their brakes about three houses up and then continue to accelerate, mostly coming from Trenton Road down. The other way, there's a lot of traffic on the street and they are slowing down around that corner. But we would like that machine comes when fall starts again and if we could paint stop in front of these stop signs, it may help a little bit. It'll help with the people that yell, "I didn't see the stop sign." We get a lot of that. We stand out there with clipboards and pens and pretend we're writing down license plate numbers and people do stop. We've called a few times. Over twenty-five years I've been there and in forty years my husband's been in the house, we've been calling numerous times. We usually called the school district and they would take care of the buses if they could. They know they have a couple of problem drivers. I believe they're contracting out next year, so this may be a whole nother ballgame with the bus drivers. It'll be a different company from what I hear. I usually call the police department when I have the time. I get some of the younger officers. They have been wonderful. They show up, they sit there. But if somebody sees a marked car, they all stop. So it tells me they know what they're doing. We just like, comes the fall when school starts again, somebody out there, because the kids are going to get hit sooner or later. We've had cars hit. We've had a lot of damage. Nighttime, you hear them coming and going, but you know, there's not a lot of people out walking. But this time of year, there's a lot more people walking around dusk. So if we could have more patrols maybe in the morning and later at night. They're actually not as bad right after school. They do stop.
I can assure you, ma'am, that we'll address the problem.
Okay. Thanks.
Excuse me. Could I ask what those side streets were again?
Uh, Queen Anne, I said Beaumont, the intersection. Queen Anne and Beaumont.
Just down there a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
South Olds.
Queen Anne and Beaumont, Beaumont.
Chief, if the board requests that you send a very firm letter to Valley Day School and tell them that we are tired of having them ignore the safety of our residents and that the laws will be strictly enforced when those buses are rolling in and out of there, okay?
Judge, I can assure you that both myself and Officer Trindal will be down there.
Good.
And we will speak to the bus drivers and we'll educate them.
Put them on notice in writing and warn them. And then don't fire a shot across their bow. Arrest them.
Okay.
Because obviously, even though the, obviously, children aren't in school, the administration of that school is still there.
Should be there, yes.
So they'll, yeah, they'll be there all summer. So. Thomas Day?
Yeah, I live at 210 Andover, right off of the parkway. I like to speak when somebody said something earlier about the stop signs really don't work or whatever it is, right, but between, on Twin Oak Drive, I think it is, between Ox Valley and Woodburn Road, they have numerous stop signs.
On Terrace, Terrace Drive.
Right. And between them, they got the speed humps, not the bumps.
Yes, sir.
Right, with the indicators, you know, instead of having so many stops. As a matter of fact, I went down there the other day and it's just the arrows. There's no hump, you know, but people still slowing down, right? And they move them too, right? Another thing is, you guys said there was a hundred and nine incidents or something you had recorded?
There's calls for service when the officers generate a report as a result of enforcement.
For accidents and stuff?
For, this is just traffic enforcement, sir.
Now, it would be speeding and...
I was trying, I was going to ask how many were at Andover Road and Ox Valley.
Without checking, I can't tell you.
A couple of years ago, I did a petition. I had to sign thirty, forty people. I had pictures. I have pictures of cars flipped over at that intersection. That's the only crossroad to get across Ox Valley Road. If they come out of Austin Drive, they still got to go there, right? Right now, we have a, I don't know if it's a handicap facility or whatever it is, it's 203 or 205, right, with handicap people on there that people take care of or people come to take care of them. Right now, as I come out now, there was five cars parked. You try to come in from Ox Valley Road and they're all the way out to the corner and somebody's coming out, your ass into your car, sticking out on Ox Valley Road. And the bad thing about it during school time is the school buses, right, will run down and jam you out there instead of them stopping back, right? How about commercial vehicles on our roads?
What's the, yeah, it's a good question. Let's, because I know that's an issue sometimes we get. In terms of commercial vehicles being parked on a road, I think it's based on the gross vehicle weight, correct? What's, what would be, to give people an idea, because you have gotten complaints about people that might have a business, they might run out of their house, but they park their vehicles or work vehicles in front of their house. And sometimes the work vehicles can be very large. It does obstruct views, things like that. But there is a, it's a state law, correct, about how...
I'm not talking about an owner-operator. I'm talking about somebody that works for somebody and parks a company truck at their house.
Okay.
Which would be a box van.
Well, yeah, man, but even if it is somebody who lives there and has that, but I think it's still the same issue in terms of the vehicle weight.
It would be seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand pounds, John, is that correct?
Pennsylvania.
Yeah, seventeen thousand. But it's not state law. That's our ordinance.
That's ordinance.
Doesn't matter how large the vehicle is.
Okay.
Size-wise, it's gross vehicle weight.
All right. Can you give us just a general idea, what's, the vehicle seventeen thousand pounds? What would...
Pennsylvania, a commercial vehicle is anything that is seventeen thousand pounds or more.
Okay. And they're not, and it's not allowed to be parked on a township road or a residential street or...
Well, that, that would depend on our local ordinance, is whatever.
I think ordinance dictates it.
Yeah, we have, I believe the ordinance also says seventeen thousand pounds.
Okay.
To enforce that, unfortunately, I've just recently researched that, to enforce that, we need to give them, we have signs out, but sometimes, under the federal regulations, a commercial vehicle can be used as a personal conveyance when they're not working. So in order to enforce that, what we need, what we've been doing is actually speaking with the owner of that truck and giving it to, giving them written notice that that is a violation of the township ordinance.
Okay.
So it may take a little time before we, each one has to, you know, every time we get a complaint, we go out and we speak with the people and we give them written notice.
All right.
Did everyone hear what Officer Trindal said? He wasn't using the mic and I think it's valuable when you talk.
All right, another thing. Another thing. If they would put a, how far back from the intersection do you have to be? Right up? I mean, Ox Valley, they park on the Andover Road, right out to the end of the intersection.
You mean for any kind of vehicle, right? Not just a commercial, but you mean any kind of vehicle?
I'm talking about the businesses across the street from me, which is for the handicapped.
There's five cars parked there now and they're nurses. And the other thing is supposedly their office, whatever company it is, is behind fudruckers, yet once or twice a week, you'll have eight or ten cars parked out there because they have a meeting of supervisor, whoever the heck they are, at that house.
Right. But all right, is the question about parking near an intersection or a cur or a...
I mean, if they, you know, if they put in no parking twenty feet back, you know, yell a cur, I mean, it gives a car a chance to get in off Ox Valley Road.
I understand. That's a very good question. I just want to find out.
I believe it's twenty feet from a crosswalk, thirty feet from a stop sign, provided you're on the same side of the street as the stop sign. The other side would be fine.
All right. Do we have that reinforced there, right there?
If that's, yeah, that, I think we're taking notes, obviously, of all the complaints, what intersections and streets we're talking about, so.
And another thing, now, I've owned my house since nineteen sixty-three there. I've never seen a speed trap on Ox Valley Road. If you try to cross Andover Road at between three and seven or whatever time, right, it's a death trap. They come down here sixty, seventy miles an hour. Instead of putting a sign out there that says thirty-five or, you know, "You're going this fast", why don't we put a speed trap out there? Why don't we catch some of these people? Like I say, I've been here forty-seven years. I ain't never seen a speed trap on that road.
Okay. Officer Trindal?
The problem we have with speed enforcement is we have to have somewhere to sit. Not only, not only for the car that's doing the timing, but we have to have somewhere to be able to safely pull vehicles over and safely have the patrol cars sitting in an area that they can get out. Doesn't do us any good to just sit up there and not be able to get out into traffic.
Between Andover Road and the golf course, there's three streets, side streets, plus straightaway between the golf course, which is level ground. Somebody give me an Andover Road and pull them over a quarter mile down the road? What else we got? Well, like I said, the school buses jam in the intersection, you know, when you're trying, not just the school buses, but particularly, I mean, that's a big, you know, you don't, but traffic itself won't even stop and your ass ends stuck out on Ox Valley Road. But like I say, if we can put in no parking from the corner back twenty-five feet to give somebody a chance to get in, right, and you guys, you know, there's a lot of accidents there at Andover Road and Ox Valley. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Harvey, am I allowed to add a name to your list that didn't get to speak at the board of supervisors' meeting and came for more play?
Um, okay. Is this somebody who wants to speak tonight, you mean, or? Well, that's fine. Yeah, I'm going to open it up later on. Okay. Oh, Sam.
Years ago, I presented that petition for getting a red light there. And for some unknown reason, it wound up down the Trenton Road and Andover. Supposedly, the reason was that it would be too close to Route One for a red light being there or too close to Trenton Road. Could we follow that up or what? I don't know whatever happened.
Terms of, I know, traffic planning is probably better able to talk about what are the rules in terms of putting in a red light, you know, why would PennDOT say no to one area, yes to another area?
There's many different reasons. They do have requirements for how close traffic signals can be spaced to each other.
All right. A question then. Is Trenton Road a state road?
Yes. Yes. Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Yes. Of a path mark, you got them within fifty feet of each other.
Yeah, they do make exceptions depending on the situation. I'm not exactly sure what this particular application was.
Like I said, it's a four-lane highway and it's your only cross street. People trying to get across from one side to the other on them.
Yeah, I just don't, I'm not familiar with the scenario of the signal application and all, but we can certainly look into it if, if desired.
Yeah, I mean, it could be the grade too, I'm wondering, because it is a climb. I don't know what the grade is exactly, but you are going uphill when you hit that stop sign or that intersection that Mr. Day's talking about. Okay. All right. Mike Musial?
Hello, Mike Musial. 234 Andover Road. I believe Mr. Day may have stole my thunder, but I just wanted to reiterate the intersection of Andover Road and Oxford Valley Road. At times, it is very difficult to either enter or exit Andover Road onto Oxford Valley. There is the home that is there that may be a health facility where we do have numerous cars that are parked there. At times, there is a two-car driveway. They may not utilize that driveway. They could, but they don't. The house that is on the corner, which is on Oxford Valley, they at times may also park a car on that corner. Very difficult to enter. If you know the highway with the rush hour traffic, you stop, you want to make your left-hand turn and pull into the roadway. You have cars that are coming directly out on you, onto you. They want to exit Andover onto Oxford Valley. You cannot get into that road. There may be three or four cars trying to get out. So now you're stuck on Oxford Valley trying to make your turn into it. I do have some pictures that I'd like to at least let the chief see. We have called numerous times because of what we feel are violations. We would like to see at least possibly painting the curb lines yellow, no parking zone, so that this way it would give us, the people entering and exit, at least some entrance and exit to this highway.
Sir, how long has that facility been there?
To my knowledge, about five years.
About five years.
You know, I'm wondering how they got the use, though Gunnison Home is supposed to be for residential purposes only. What was that? It sure wasn't me. I know that zoning ordinance like I know my own house.
Well, it has been there for a while. My other concerns are the new Wawa that was just put in. Now, if we have a traffic survey, I'm kind of taken back as to, and I understand the intersection because of fudruckers and the Arby's being taken down, what PennDOT's plans were, whether they've been canceled and were put back on fifteen years waiting list here. I still can't understand how we allow businesses to come in and only give them one exit to exit that facility. The same goes with the BP McDonald's on the corner. We have an entrance from Oxford Valley Road and Business Route One into it. We have an entrance and an exit onto Route One. We have people that exit the entrance, or, excuse me, yes, exit the entrance, which really creates havoc there. Center, or Oxford Point is also another sore point because you'll have people that will come out along with the BP station, come up Route One North and make the U-turn. We've already had one fatality there. I believe it was a motorcycle rider.
Right.
So we have many U-turns there. In my travels, it's not uncommon to see at least in my morning and my afternoon, at least one or two happening per day. The concerns are, and I have called the township, the police department on this numerous times also is when the Penn State crew decides to collect on the medians for their cancer collections. That, to my knowledge, is a violation of Pennsylvania state law. And when I've contacted the police department, I've had an officer tell me that we don't feel that that is enforceable. And I am kind of taken by that because...
Mr. Musial, I can tell you that that's a pet peeve of mine and that's enforced all the time.
Seriously?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't want anybody out on those medians. The Penn State students do a great job, but I don't want them out in the middle of the highway. I don't want them in harm's way. And whenever I'm coming down there, whether I'm with my kids or not, I will call the supervisor and I will have them removed from the median all the time.
Agreed. The Penn State, their students are trying to do their best for...
They do a great job.
For a good cause. But it's still irritating that when you're, you know how to navigate that intersection. You're coming down off of Oxford Valley. You have two lanes now that are going onto Oxford Valley North. I've lived here twenty-one years and I still have issues with all the Oxford Valleys and the directions that they go. But you have two lanes that are coming down and you also tend to have those two lanes coming down where the people want to merge all the way over to the left. So now you have a crew out there that is collecting money and you have horns blowing, cars screeching, and these kids intertwining with traffic. Last of it is, and gentlemen did put on a good show with their presentation, the paths for bicycles and pedestrians. That has been one of my irritations since I've lived in the township, that in raising my children, not to be able to ride a bike down the sidewalk with them or push a, push them in a carriage without either having to move around obstacles such as basketball courts, cars that are not completely in their driveways but overhanging into the sidewalks. Route One, I would love to walk my kids over there to the golf course or the, the putting range that's over there across from the township building here. We have no sidewalks to do that. We're trying to make it so that it's more pleasing for us to walk, ride bikes, but yet I don't see that happening. So needless to say, I thank you for having this meeting.
All right.
Quite informative.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Musial. I appreciate your input. Just so you know too, because you did reference the Wawa and that Oxford Valley intersection, the Wawa is actually a Middletown. It's, the line is kind of crazy over there in terms of where it falls, where it's Middletown. The intersection, you know, for lack of a better term, the fudruckers intersection that I think The Courier Times wrote a story about, maybe five years ago, PennDOT was ready to move on it and here we are, five years later, nothing's happened. We've been, you know, trying to, you know, figure out what's going on too. The issue for a long time was PennDOT was arguing and having some legal battles with the owner of that property over buying it so they could do their intersection. That was their legal problem. That has been solved relatively recently, six months ago, maybe eight months or something like that.
Obviously, the building's down.
So, right. The building's down now and that was, that happened basically as soon as the legal argument was done. Now it's just a matter of getting on PennDOT and trying to get them to, you know, put it back on what they call the TIP, the Traffic Improvement Plan. I've had some conversations with State Senator McElhenney as well as Representative Galloway in terms of trying to put some pressure on PennDOT to move that along. We'll try and see.
Do you have any type of ETA when they...
No. I do not. Sorry. I would love to tell you at time, but...
That was later for what, two years ago to be?
Oh, I think it was more than that.
A lot years ago for it to be started?
Yeah.
So now we're probably on the fifteen-year list?
I don't know. I suggest that we're trying to get them to move on it and it's just, you know, getting PennDOT to move on anything is frustrating for us as well.
The municipalities were quarreling among themselves too, as who would be culpable and who would pay for this and that, and it just got... and who would pay for this and that, and it just got bogged down. But I watched that fiasco and we're still not resolving it. And trying to get the state to move is almost a lesson in futility, so...
I understand.
We're gonna keep pressing.
Okay. If I may, one last concern, and this deals with the exiting from Route 1 South onto Oxford Valley Road. We've, what, the last five years or so ago, we redid that intersection, made it wider, where now you have either the trucks or the people just thinking it's a runway to fly off of, and immediately get over as far left as they can to get onto Cabot Boulevard. So now you have tractor trailers that are coming across three lanes and turning onto Cabot Boulevard, which kind of throws a logjam into everybody behind them.
Right. Okay.
Or everybody, I should say, who has the right of way.
Right.
So if there's anything that we could do with that intersection...
Okay.
Would be nice.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Donna Merrick?
Good evening. Donna Merrick, 804 Auburn Road. I had brought this attention to Mr. Harvey a couple of weeks ago. First of all, my speed limit sign was stolen, and I voiced my concerns to Mrs. Wislowski's daughter. Second, I had a, the speed trap, or whatever that thing is that catches the speed. It was on my street the night when I got home. The next day when I came home from work, it was gone. I don't know why. It wasn't even there 24 hours, because my neighbor is also here, that lives next door to me, and her husband said it was gone by 8:00 in the morning. I don't know why, but when that was on my street, we never had anybody speeding. As soon as it was removed, our neighbor's door, house, his truck four doors down, their house is four doors down from me, his truck was hit because they came flying up from Stanwood. There is a constant problem with them flying up from Stanwood, and they're also flying down. On the third house in from the corner, they don't care that the speed limit sign is directly on my property and my neighbors. I have a son, I have a 10-month-old daughter, my neighbor has a four-year-old son, and my neighbors also across the street have children. What can we do about these kids speeding? And it's not only the kids, it's the parents, too.
Okay.
I can only tell you, ma'am, that we'll address it. I can't tell you why the speed trailer was moved on that particular day. Maybe it malfunctioned. There could have been any number of reasons. But there's no specific time limit. Brian is instructed to move it around all over the municipality, and now we've been fortunate enough, as a result of the Board of Supervisors, to have another speed trailer. It should be here any day.
Okay.
And we'll have another speed trailer. I can assure you, ma'am, that it will be addressed.
Okay. Because the street is so narrow, if there's a car on my side and there's a car on the other side, you're gonna get one car up the street. I've now had to change my daughter's birthday party from my house to my mother's in Jersey because I can't, I'm afraid of my relatives having their car hit or someone else's car getting hit, and it's not fair to them.
Ma'am, that's why we're having a meeting. I want to give you comfort level here. I don't want you to have to change your party from your resident to another state. That's not fair. I can assure you that we'll address it, ma'am.
Okay. And for this lady behind me, the director's name is Mr. Jeffrey Ax of Valley Day School, and I understand what she's saying, because my son goes to that school. And it's not only Pensbury School District buses that are picking up these kids and they're flying, they also have Ben Salem and the Shamney School District, and they also have taxi cabs to pick up these students, because I've pulled out of there after I've picked up my son and I've almost gotten hit. So, it's just not only Pensbury, but I also have the Pensbury school buses passing my house, and my street requires, says, "No buses." And the buses come down and they fly right on back up from Village Park.
Ma'am, I, I don't want this, our meeting to denigrate into a me of bashing all the bus drivers. There's a lot of good bus drivers out there.
No, no, I understand. I've mentioned it to Pensbury, and they told me to get their bus numbers. I've given them the same bus numbers over and over and over again, and they're not enforcing it, Pensbury.
But you're right, ma'am. There's buses from Ben Salem, the Shamney School District, limos out of the city of Philadelphia.
Absolutely, and New Jersey.
There's all kinds, yes, practice, the private cab services, so on and so forth. And you're right, there is taxi cabs up there also.
Yes.
But I can assure you, ma'am, that we are gonna address it.
Thank you.
You're right on that curve, too.
Yes.
And that's so dangerous.
Yes, it is.
It did.
Because I've almost even gotten, it's just coming out of the Valley Day School to make a left. If them buses are parked a certain way, you can't see through them buses. You have to physically pull all the way out. And I've almost gotten clipped from this way, and if I went to make the right, I have to literally physically go way out in order to get around the bus, because the buses aren't parked right either. And I've almost gotten clipped this way only by a taxi cab.
It's such a beautiful street, too.
Yes, it is.
I was just down there last week, and I marveled at how beautiful the houses look.
Yes, but I'd like to thank you, Mr. Harvey and Mr. Gray, for getting me a new speed limit sign on my street, but they're still not obeying by it.
All right, well, we're gonna do, we're gonna do our best.
Thank you.
But thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. Sam Baloo?
I'd like to thank everyone that came here to listen to us tonight, and also, I'm impressed by the amount of people that showed up. I'm very happy to see that. I live at 241 Alden Avenue, which is right up from Valley Day School, two houses up. I got here late due to a work commitment, but hopefully I won't duplicate too much of what was said in one sense, but I think I've heard that the bus problem is a problem there. I'm retired, I see what goes on there. One of my neighbors also, we see what goes on with the speeding and what have you. Just want a couple of comments I wanted to make, that, you know, with the running of stop signs, when you don't stop, it goes hand in hand with the speeding, because the people, and there's a comment before, they come down, they might slow down a tad, maybe just a little bit, and they fly through the stop sign and keep going, and that's nothing, I would say. A fair estimate that we see 40 mile an hour plus speeds constantly on Alden Avenue. Many other township streets have the same problem. It's an epidemic, and I'm not sure what level of enforcement, you know, you want to take on that, but my opinion is, if you don't stop or you speed, you get a ticket, period. You don't come to almost a stop, you stop. That's what the sign says. So, I'm not sure where that goes with things, but I, that's my feeling, that the cars must stop. Take the money out of their pocket if they don't. Pretty simple. The worst offender to Valley Day School is the first student buses. That's one of the ones that contracts in there, as you mentioned. Many people come, many different people come in there, but they, it doesn't matter what's Pensbury or some, one other, the cab companies, whatever, they don't stop there. They go down Alden Avenue, past Valley Road, never even slow down. You don't even see a brake light. So, that's a little bit of what's going on up there. I have conversations with people about their speeding. I've had exchanged a few words with people. I'm very upfront about it. You run that stop sign, you're gonna hear from me, you know, in a courteous way. I don't train profanities with anyone. I don't get into a, you know, an argument, but you come up that street and run speed on my street, or run that stop sign, I'm gonna talk to you about it. And that's, may have helped in some cases. I know a couple of people that have met me that way, and we've become friends, let's say. I'm serious, you know? But, you know, it's, I see one thing that helps us the most. I think the speed vehicle is a helpful tool, but I think enforcement is the number-one issue. These people that come up this street, most of them are there on a regular basis. Make it cost them in their pocket, enforce the stop sign law. Speeding is a little bit more difficult, as you said. As the other gentleman was speaking here before when I came in, you want to use my driveway, fine. You can park your police car in my driveway, anytime, whether day or night, and enforce the law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to mention, I forgot to mention, just, that Mr. Snipes wanted to extend his thanks to everybody who was here and apologize. Tonight is actually his wedding anniversary, and so his wife was here for a little bit, and he had some plans with her, which is understandable, but he wanted to thank everybody for coming out this evening and apologize for having to leave early. Yes, ma'am?
I'm wondering if we, when we have our police cars, our black and whites, then they automatically slow down and people start warning them. Are we prohibited from using private cars with the, what are you using, VAS car now?
We use unmarked cars.
Unmarked cars.
Okay. Then, you know, that, that should be a deterrent if you're nabbing them. I agree with giving the citations. I think I said before...
Yes.
...ticket them, because we, we have to do something, and if you hit them in a pocketbook, that's where they feel it the most.
Okay. All right. Those were the names I had on the list, but obviously, as I said, we want to hear from everybody who's here. So, yes, Mrs. Russell?
Good evening, everyone. I live at 399 Thornridge Drive. My name is Betty Russell. We've lived there for 53 years, and we've been having problems with the speeding. We've had three, my husband parks out in the road, I park in the driveway, he, three of his cars has been hit, and the cars go right on, on the front lawn, okay? Three cars. So, now, we didn't have a car for a long time, so now he's got a new, little, small truck. So I'm hoping that something can be done with a stop sign or whatever use people could do, I would appreciate it very much, because it's been a lot of aggravation, you know what I mean? You know, coming up the lawn and hitting the trees and all sorts of things. But, you know, if you could do something, I would really appreciate it. And also, we have got a lot of problems with trucks. I mean, trucks on the driveway, I mean, big trucks, big, you know, the flat trucks? I don't know what they're called. And when you're going out the driveway, you can't see, you know what I mean? Because you have a corner here and a corner there, you're looking here, and you're, it's blocked, you know, you can't really see, there's too many cars.
Okay.
So, that's, that's my problem. Okay? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Sharon Williams, and I live at 802 Auburn Road. My neighbor was just here also.
Excuse me. Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Can't talk, aren't I? How's that? Better?
Good.
It's 802 Auburn Road. I have two areas. One is my road, of course. As they turn off Olds Boulevard, they hit the metal. As they're coming up the road, they've already hit the metal. As my neighbor said, they swipe, swiped one car already and kept on going. And my husband and I will just sit there on the front porch, where the very first house is, they turn in and we'll sit there, "There they go." I says, "I had a cop car sitting in my driveway, which you can, anytime you want to, you can have a field day with them." Also, it's Trenton Road and Olds Boulevard. That intersection is so dangerous. We have an accident there just about once a month, almost, and some days, some car is gonna go into one of those four houses on the corner. They're gonna have a little visitor, a car in their house. That's what I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir?
I own one of those houses.
My name is Bob Borden, and I live on 116 Winding Way. Just want to thank everyone for coming tonight and having the meeting. Just a couple of points. I think based on the results of the Speed Spy, doesn't appear as though, at least for that particular day, that speeding is the issue. I think it's more of an issue of volume. So I do like some of the suggestions in the slideshow, such as the diagonal diverters, where you kind of discourage drivers from using it as a cut-through. And so I think anything that discourages volume would probably be the best for Winding The other thing I wanted to mention was, I also have a concern with the speed and volume on Makefield Road. And being that Winding Way intersects with Makefield Road, that kind of encourages people to use Winding Way as a cut-through. And it's also a crosswalk for children as well, walking to Eleanor Roosevelt School. And perhaps it's been brought up before, but is there any reason why it can't, we cannot consider, or is there any reason why we can't consider putting a traffic light there? Because not only would that reduce speed on Makefield Road heading towards Big Oak Road, but it would also be safer for the children who have to cross that Makefield Road to get to Eleanor Roosevelt School. Has that ever been brought up before, having a traffic light on the intersection of Winding Way? Because there's one intersection of Big Oak and Makefield.
Right.
Why not one at the top of Winding Way where it intersects with Winding Way West and Makefield Road? Has that ever been brought up to your knowledge?
Yes. There is a fellow that was killed right at that intersection, and I still have the email from a Mrs. O'Brien who wrote me about that problem, because it's straight across, you know, the, if we're kind of a dog leg, it would be not so easy for them to speed through there. But I don't know the solution. That's why I'm so grateful for these gentlemen doing this presentation tonight. It's not very often that I get impressed, and I do thank you so much, so you've given us alternatives.
I live on the same side. I live on Independence Drive, and we go to Eleanor Roosevelt, and that's, we're considered walkers, because we live so close, and there's no way I'm letting my son walk across Makefield Road. And we would have to walk up to Winding Way. That's the closest intersection for us.
I mean, there's painted crosswalks there, but, right, it's, there's a concern that even with those, without any...
Right.
...light there.
The crossing guard got hit by a car.
Right. I mean, you know, I don't know how many incidents have to occur before one is, I mean, if we wanted to pursue that, what would be the course of action?
State car.
Was there a petition? Would that be appropriate to get a light there, or what's the course of action?
That's why I'm kind of asking, I'm listening to you, but I was also asking our police department here, Makefield Road's a state road, and so it raises a whole other level of issues in terms of getting any kind of traffic light. And if you wouldn't mind, just give us an idea, if we had a situation on the state road, what's the process of getting a traffic light?
Yeah, well, basically, any traffic light, whether it's on the intersection of two private streets, two township roads, or involves a state road, every traffic signal's gotta get reviewed and approved for installation by the Department of Transportation. They have several warrants that they look to meet them, to determine if a traffic signal is warranted. So they, they can't just put them in everywhere. So they do look at certain warrants. One of them's based on volume. There's a couple that are based on different ways of looking at the volumes, whether it's peak hour for eight hours during a day, or four hours during a day. There is also a warrant that's based on accident history, and it does require a certain threshold of accidents to happen within a five-year period. And, you know, there are all things that can be looked at. But basically, every situation where a municipality wants to put in a traffic signal is they fill out an application to the department to permit and operate a traffic signal. And that gets reviewed by the Department of Transportation and determined if it meets the satisfactory warrants, or meets the warrant satisfactorily. And at that point, then it gets approved and either designed and then constructed.
By the action.
By, yeah. That's a good point Jerry raised, that it usually, or almost always is, the bill is footed by the township to install that and to perpetually maintain it as well.
I'm puzzled about why. I just learned tonight that that's a state road, and you can see where the McAdam breaks, right at the Makefield Township line, as you're coming down that little grade toward Big Oak and the light. But who paved the false township part of Makefield Road?
Judge, I couldn't answer that one.
There's been no roadwork up there, and I live up in that area.
We have a good road in Falls. It's the Makefield Road that's kind of...
Yes.
...torn up. torn up. And I just
The Falls one was done just in the past two years.
Yes.
Because that's when a lot of our cut through traffic began, because they closed Makefield and diverted traffic down either Alden or Penns Grant Drive and Independence Drive. And I think a lot of people figured out they could get right to Trenton Road that didn't know.
I don't think Makefield or the PennDOT paved it.
I'm sure we did.
Yeah, and that's what puzzles me, you know? How can that be?
Yeah, because it was only the Makefield Road. You're right, it ends.
Yeah, you can see where the pavement ends, just before the light going down the grade.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm Levittown, Thornridge Drive. I'm a regular, I've been there from the, I'm nervous.
That's okay. Nothing to be nervous about.
I've been there, I'm the original owner. I live on the drive, on Thornridge Drive. We have a lot of streets that come from hills onto the drive. We've had children over the years hit by cars by coming down. Now, true, some of it is the children's fault for not looking. But those cars, that's a Speedway on Thornridge Drive. And I, my question is this, the Speed Sky, the Speeds
Speed Spy.
that you have, is there any way to put cameras on that, to get license numbers, or any way that you can, because you can put that up, and they see that up, they're gonna lower their speed.
No, they won't see this, ma'am.
They don't see the Speed Spy.
Yeah, the Speed Spy is very
The Speed Spy is
That's the one that shows your
No, no.
No, ma'am.
That's a speed trailer.
Yeah, that's a speed trailer.
Speed Spy is a small box.
But it tells you what the speed is.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a sneaky one.
Have you ever done one on Thornridge Drive?
No. With the Speed Spy, no, we have not.
Well, we've had a lot of them, and they're, they just speed down there like you can't believe. And somebody's gonna get really hurt sometime, and it's always the same, and it's usually the same cars. My husband will stand outside and holler as they go by, if they're paying attention. But it is, it's a bad runway there.
Okay.
Is that in the lower drive, ma'am?
Yes, the lower drive.
It's the lower drive, ma'am. That's, I know where you're referring to.
Yeah.
And I can assure you that this Speed Spy is a relatively new tool in our enforcement procedure, but I can assure you that it will be utilized there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Any others? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Artie Gallagher from Pinewood. We replaced the curbs and redid the roads. My mom lived on Nesting Rock Lane. You had talked about emergency response. There's a very large tag along trailer sitting right out on the roadway. There's also been a pontoon boat out there. If we ever had to get any equipment down there, you're not gonna be able to do it if anybody's parked on the other side of the road. And it's all through the township. I think something needs to be done about that, these people parking these wide trailers.
Right, now this is on, you said you live in
This was on Nesting Rock Lane.
Okay, all right.
Actually, the trailer is unregistered.
Okay.
They can't be in the road.
Another issue I have, since they put this new Walmart store in, people are coming down Levittown Parkway, and they're avoiding the light coming down Pinewood Drive, and they're flying. They're coming down by St. Paul's Episcopal Church.
Okay.
And they're going out down the other end towards 13. I don't know what can be done. It's probably not as bad as what some of these other folks have. But, you know, it's something that needs to be looked at.
Right, yeah. Generally speaking, all the drives and all the Levittown sections have the same issue, the same problems, because they're wider roads. They tend to, you know, because they're so much wider, as you heard the talking about with traffic planning and design, the visual aspect of how wide this street is just lets people just feel like, oh, I can go faster here. And so whether it's Thornridge or Pinewood or Elderberry, or we're here, we hear it on all the drives, really. And it's, is that definitely something we're looking at? We've talked before about putting speed humps on Thornridge Drive, the lower part of Thornridge Drive. There was some opposition to that from some residents and some other areas, too, and so we decided not to do that. But, you know, we want to make this, again, as Mr. Dockery said before, this is a really kind of a beginning of the process, gathering the information, figuring out how we want to approach these problems. But the point you raised about cut through actually reminds me of a question I wanted to ask, and I wanted to ask Mr. Dockery. One of the things that Mr. Baker talked, or Mr. Baker, talked about in his presentation was, if you can show that 40% or more of the traffic on a road is cut through, then you generally recommend doing something to try and stop the cut through. How do you determine where the people are going? I mean, how do you do that?
We usually do what's called a license plate survey, where you basically have someone standing on either end of the road who would document the vehicle, and it doesn't always have to be their license plate, it could be, you know, make and model or whatever. But basically, you have two people that are documenting the car as they come in on one end and leave on the end, and then you compare notes, and you can basically determine who just passed through
Right.
versus who originated within
Okay.
the limits of your study.
Okay.
Jerry, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, that's how we could determine the volume of cut through, but I just wanted to point out that 40% is kind of an arbitrary number. The township could make it whatever they wanted.
Okay.
What we, yeah, it's a guideline. I mean, what we try to do is prevent a situation where you have every resident on every street in the township coming in and saying, I want traffic coming on my road. We would just be bombarded, so we need a way to prioritize and kind of figure out where we really want to put these things.
Right.
So that's why we go ahead and set those parameters.
Those guidelines, okay. All right.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for bringing us to our attention. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Is Sheen?
Regula Sheehan, I live in Breezy Acres. Is there a possibility for the traffic lights close by the one here and the one on Olds Boulevard to be coordinated? Because I do not like to sit trying to make a left-hand turn onto Lincoln Road, on Lincoln Highway, and I have to wait 15 to 20 minutes to do that?
Okay. We could definitely, I guess the synchronization
I mean, we would like to have a traffic light there.
Right.
But, because people have gotten killed there.
Right.
Trying to make left-hand turns or even right-hand turns. And quite frequently, a big rig will come up and stop on the, going north on the side. They had gotten their lunch at the gas station, and they parked there. You cannot make a turn, because you cannot see anybody
Okay.
coming up the road.
Okay.
I don't know. Is there any possibility that something could be done?
And you're looking, you're talking about the intersection on Lincoln Highway coming out of Breezy Acres? I mean, that, or
Out of Breezy, there are only two exits in Breezy Acres. One is at Kennedy Drive, also entrance, and the other one is on Hoover. Now, never make a left-hand turn onto Lincoln Road off Kennedy Drive because you get run down. You have to go to Hoover if you want to have a slim chance to make it.
Okay.
But sitting there for 20 minutes, I mean, come on.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay. All right. So, yeah, I don't, we don't know, obviously, again, like Mr. Dockery said, in terms of putting in a traffic light, there are lots of warrants you have to meet.
If they're coordinated, it would be better.
And that's something we can look at.
It would be better.
Sure, in terms of synchronization, we can look to see if there's some kind of problem with them that we can see if they're not synchronized properly. Yeah, that's a good issue. Okay.
Mrs. Sheehan, I'm beginning to understand why we have this particular group of people here. Ms. Sterling was responsible, I think, with other neighbors of hers in getting the action. She's a shaker and a mover. And if you could get a petition going in Breezy Acres and
That is practically impossible, because people are afraid.
Are they?
Yes, they are.
Afraid of who? The owner of the park?
I'm not afraid, I'm not afraid in
Oh, we know you're not.
I survived to get stopped, okay? So I'm not afraid of anybody. But the other people will not do that.
Yeah.
I know they will not.
Well, you know
I know they are starting to do something that is, I don't know, something about a town watch again, or something like that. I do not know.
Yeah, well, looking at the synchronization is not
But that wouldn't be anything for the town watch.
Okay, all right.
Synchronization is a good suggestion, and we could try that from the start. It doesn't cost like a traffic light.
Right.
Yeah, well, if they just were coordinated a little bit better.
Right.
It would be a big help.
Chief, that's a good assignment for you.
No, but it's
Coordinate those lights.
It's more of the traffic planning and design
Joe.
Yeah, will be their responsibility, but
Good.
Okay.
You did a good job tonight, do another one.
So we'll, something else we'll take a look at, okay? Ms. Sheehan?
I can't hear you.
Oh, we're gonna
I can't hear you.
Mrs. Sheehan? Mrs. Sheehan? Traffic planning and design, that's their responsibility, would be to check on those lights and see if they're properly synchronized. That's something they will do.
That would be a big help.
Okay.
The biggest help would be a traffic light there somewhere, either on Hoover or on Kennedy Drive. But, you know, that is one of those futile things here in the United States. You don't, you know, you have to kill a few more people before you can get that, you know?
Okay.
That's why, is it right? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, anyone else?
I have one gripe. And since traffic planning and design are the guys that we go to, the intersection where Trenton Road touches Tyburn Road, that is horrible. It's worse than a Corderoy Road with deep dips and high, I think, that is an awful drive. Now, I know it's a state highway, but I'd be willing to do anything, even shoot somebody in the state to get that road fixed. I'll bring my gun.
You look into it?
Okay.
Yeah, what's your particular concern? I know that intersection was done, not
It's really the
Oh, it's got some rotting?
Crossing over, it's really kind of not graded very well.
Okay, okay.
See, Trenton Road has real heavy trucks that come down there, the 18-wheelers.
Right.
And they try to beat the light. But then they can't, so they have to jam on their brakes, and it moves the asphalt.
Yeah, we have some ravelling or rotting.
And we've got Corderoy.
Yeah, we can look at that.
It's bad.
Okay.
My neighbors thank you, and I thank you.
Mm-hmm, no problem.
All right, well, again, I want to thank everybody for coming out to this meeting, members of the board, the professionals and police department did an excellent job. Thank them for all their hard work. And for everybody who came out tonight, and those people that are gonna be watching this. And a couple reminders. Again, this is really something, we're kind of just the beginning of what we want to do. This, I think, is a very good start, giving you an idea of the things that we've already started doing with some of the equipment and some of the procedures the police have in place, some of the options we have for more permanent, long-term fixes. It gives us the information that we need so that we can have people positioned in the right place, we can have our equipment put in the right places, and try and fight the problems that you're seeing. This is only gonna be solved by community effort. And that being said, one thing I do want to remind people of, and I'm sure people understand this, but the police department we have, and Mrs. Wazlowski said it, and we all believe it, is an outstanding police department. It really is. As great as they are, all the equipment we can buy them, there is no way they can stop everybody from speeding. There's no way they can stop everybody from blowing a stop sign. It just isn't possible. We'd have to hire about 300 officers so that we could have one on every single mile of road 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that's obviously not, not an option. But with the help of the community, giving us the ideas and the input, look out for this situation, whether it's people parking too close to a curve or an intersection that's causing problems, blowing through stop signs, those are all the things that we need and they need to really help them do their job and, you know, help them serve you. And so we appreciate all the input. Remember about the website, going on to falls2do, twp.com. There's a link to the police department. There's a button there for traffic. You can just write in there, you know, any problem that you see, whether it's the people here in the room who are still here, or people watching this at home, or on the internet. So, again, I thank you very much for your time, and let's hope, let's hope a thunderstorm rolls through pretty soon and breaks out this heat, okay? Thank you.
It was a wonderful meeting.
Thank you.
Wonderful.